...meeting tonight will be, we've got the street beside of Sonic. And I'm going to call our attorney, he cannot be here tonight, so we're gonna have him on my cellphone tonight, okay? So give me just a minute to give Sam a call.
What's that call?
Well, he charges us $2.50 an hour, he said, is what I just checked the record. And I'm hoping we are not here for an hour with him. But due to litigations, which I was in a meeting this week that said if it doesn't go right, we're gonna be sued, then it was best that we have our attorney here, okay? And, boys, anyway.
You good?
Hey, Sam.
I'm here.
I got you, I bet you on speaker. And I'm gonna go ahead and do a real call. Mr. Lay's here, and then we'll go ahead and we're going to start the meeting, we're gonna start, Mr. Lay, discussing the street beside of Sonic, okay? But we're gonna do a real call, but Nate Wilson?
Here.
Adam Powell?
Here.
Jessica Babel-Lar?
Here.
Dorian Farmley?
Here.
Marilyn Rodman?
Here.
Of course, and then Debbie's here, and of course, there's other people not on us, and Mr. Lay's here, so we're gonna go ahead and let Mr. Lay start, okay?
I'm saying that that's a city street, and I guess he needs to reiterate his legal opinions from the dates I've got him here, you guys have got him, I think, don't you? And I guess before he does that, I think there's a couple of other issues we'll get into too later, but I don't know what everybody's definition of a legal opinion is, but according to Google, one of them says, "A legal opinion is the opinion of a particular legal practitioner about the application of a law to a particular set of facts, and usually contains conclusions or recommendations." So I'm assuming that's what was sent to me. Would that be true?
Sam?
I don't know what was sent to him. I haven't sent anything to him.
Did Garrett forward any of Sam's?
No, I'm talking about what you gave me when I asked.
Oh, yes. What it was, I gave him a copy of your opinion, just Sam. I gave it to him, and he came to the office after you gave us the first opinion and the second, so that's what he's referring to. When you said "sent," I wasn't sure.
Yeah, so, y'all, that's not, I should've clarified it. Probably I'd like to, for him, for the attorney, to comment about the second legal opinion dated February 10th, since it was the last one.
I don't have it in front of me, Mr. Lay, I'm coming from my house, but I mean, what's your question, please?
Well, on your second one, it says it's not a city street.
Well, what I did is I talked to, I looked at the statutory provisions, and I talked to the planner, Mr. Haynes, and there is, usually a city street is accepted by an action of the City Commission. And usually that's an ordinance. We didn't have an ordinance, and we didn't have anything in the minutes to show that it was a city street. I got, I looked at a statute that was suggested to me by the University of Tennessee Municipal Technical Advisory Service, and that resulted in my finding the first time that it was a city street because you had a plant approved in July of 2008, I believe, that indicated it was a city street. And that was accepted by the city, but it was not accepted by, it was accepted by the Planning Commission, but it was not accepted by the Town Council. And so, once I did further research, I revised my opinion, and my opinion is currently it is not a city street, but the Town Council is there tonight, and if they choose to accept it as a city street, then it becomes a city street.
Okay, you said "usually," that's how that is done. That's not necessarily the only way it's done, then, or why didn't you use the word "usually"?
If it's used as a city street for years and years and years, and there's an argument for that, the neatest and cleanest thing for your purposes is for them to accept it as a city street tonight.
Well, that may be true, if that's what they decide to do, but it kinda leaves it open to think that the town of Mont Eagle built a city street for a private developer, and that's not the case. The facts are nowhere near that. And usually, if the developer pays for the road, and it's in the minutes, and it's on the, and some of this I've got, I'll have to look it up, it states that if it's on the site plan and approved by the Planning Commission, in that language, nowhere does it say it has to be accepted by the City Council. And there's no evidence that I know of here on any other streets that there's minutes where the City Council has accepted the street, any recent streets that's been developed.
There's a statutory scheme, and it is my opinion, based on that statutory scheme and what I've seen, and that's my advice to the council, that they need to take positive action in order to accept the street, if it's going to be considered a street.
Well, I understand that you've already said that.
No, 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 I'm finished talking. And actually, it could be established as a city street if the city kept it up and maintained it, or the public continually used it, or something of that nature. That's called a dedication by prescription, or a dedication by public use. The point is, is that that would probably be something that we would have to even potentially litigate if it came to that. I don't think that's necessary, and that's why I'm advising the board right now relative to that.
Are you finished with now?
Yeah, I am finished now.
I don't charge $250 an hour for my advice, and I think it's a fact, which is yours. And the public does use that road, they've used it since October the 1st of 2008, or whatever it was there, and the minutes reflect that. And the minutes talk about it in several different meetings, and I guess I need to go over those. I'm assuming you guys have that. On May the 20th, the Mont Eagle Regional Planning Commission, on new business B, Sonic Drive-In Site Plan, says the engineer representing Sonic was present at the meeting to answer any and all questions. Planning Commission may have on the project. Questions were brought up concerning the roads, a 50-foot road in the rear of the project, and the widening of Rensnest Road. According to the engineer, the roads are to be the responsibility of Joe Lester and the Harden Group. A motion was made by Lex Orr to approve the site plan, seconded by James David Oliver. Motion passed 4-0, and then later on, those minutes were approved. And then, if you go to the memorandum from Chad Reese, the community planner from the Planning Commission, dated July the 10th, he recommended that the site, or the survey subdivision of that lot says, "J.A. Cameron and Associates has submitted a one-lot subdivision at the intersection of Highway 41 and Rensnest Avenue. The lot is approximately .091 acres, which will be the future site of a Sonic Drive-In restaurant. Access is being shown off of a 50-foot proposed street that will connect with Rensnest Avenue. Staff recommends the following corrections in accordance with the Mont Eagle Subdivision Regulations and zoning ordinance, and down there on analysis, it tells what those are." And at the bottom, it says, "Recommendation: Staff supports the proposed subdivision." Then, and recently, when I was talking with Garrett Haynes, by email, he says, in one of the emails, "Anya and I consider Chad's review, along with other information, in our review. I spoke with Chad during our review, and I just spoke with him again on this. He does not remember any discussion regarding the dedication nor the acceptance of this road to the town of Mont Eagle." Well, that's a setup deal, why would he? That's something that happened in 2008. There's no other, in any of the minutes I've read, there's no word of the City Council except the city street. And he's blowing smoke, and that's part of the problem here that we've gotten into with the Planning Commission, is your planners are running the town into the ground with regulations and their vision and their agenda. This town does not belong to the planners. It belongs to the people in it. And we need to get back on track, and the vision that Chad has, or not Chad now, but Garrett and Anya, may not be the vision the people have. And they've overstepped their boundary, I feel like. And then later on, he sends a couple more emails, and tell me he can't find any ordinance and all that stuff. I don't think that's his job, as a planner, to be reviewing ordinances. Did he look, personally read every ordinance? Did he read all the minutes? You know, if he did, why? And then, if you look at the next minutes, is August the 19th, I think hopefully you should have a copy of that. And this, August 19th, is after the fact of this July 10th meeting where the site plan was approved and filed at the courthouse in Altona. And you guys should have a little copy of that, but I blew one up because I couldn't read the following. And you guys can pass that down and look at it, but it should be the same thing that you have here. And a couple of things, you notice it was in fact filed at the courthouse, it has all the signatures of the road inspector and everyone else that's required with Planning Commission. It also, in some of the other minutes, it talks about there could be an issue about ingress and egress, and that Joe Lester was going to dedicate an additional 15 feet on Rensnest Avenue. This in fact shows that Joe Lester did what the minutes say. And instead of just two lanes, now there's three lanes. And this has always been what everyone has done in the past, until Garrett Haynes decides that's not enough, in your legal opinion.
Dean? This, part of the cul-de-sac?
Yes.
I know this, we're talking, this is a street, this one going white?
This is part of the street, it's called a temporary cul-de-sac, in the fact that the intention was, and it was permissible during that time, and I assume it still is, that this cul-de-sac can be extended, and then any road improvements will still have to meet the same standards. But since they're gonna do other development, this road was in fact gonna be extended, and the cul-de-sac would be extended with it. And but in the dedication, as you see here, it just says temporary, so that's why it was not posed. And then, you see here, it says "new street." It doesn't say "proposed street," or, it says "named new street." It's signed by everyone, and...
So if this gets developed down here, who?
The developer.
Okay, and then he can turn around and dedicate that to the city?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
That is, if we accept it. Now, this is something that, I'm gonna chime in, because I do know, I don't know what happened before me, but I do know we've got Keith here and John. And after I became mayor before, we accepted streets, did we not? We inspected them, and we accepted them, we just, we went through that process. So I don't know what happened here. Apparently, this street was never named, and that's the reason we're here tonight, too, is because there will be some expense with that street, and regardless...
Why will there be any expense to that street?
Well, if we're going to have to complete the temporary cul-de-sac...
No, you're not, no, you're not gonna...
So we're not gonna complete this?
No, no, the city's not out one cent, nor will they be, and it specifies in the regulations there that the developer can post a bond, if they can do it ahead of time, they can post a bond, or post the money to pay for that, as long as the city is satisfied, the work is gonna be done. And in fact, that's what happened here.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so you're saying...
You paid $25,000 and some dollars to the town of Mont Eagle, because the city was going to Tinsley to do the paving.
So you're saying, if we adopt this street tonight, there'll be no expense to the town if that property's developed?
No. And in fact, also, the developer...
All right, here's, the attorney wants to say something. Okay.
Yeah, okay. First off, it is still my legal opinion that the road as depicted on the 2008 plat needs to be accepted by the Town Council. The extension that Mr. Lay is talking about has to be reviewed by the Planning Commission first, and then reviewed, and then accepted by the Town Council. The extension, the road as it was in 2008 has been approved by the Planning Commission, but the extension he's talking about has not. And he needs to talk to Mr. Haynes, Mr. Haynes has been trying to get in touch with him, and he's advised him that it's gonna be before the planning commission on March 1st, I guess, whatever, whenever next the planning commission meets. There's two issues here, there's first, the road as it existed in 2008, or it was approved by the Planning Commission in 2008. You guys can act on that tonight. The road extension that has not been considered by the Planning Commission yet has to be considered by the Planning Commission before you can act on it. That's in the Tennessee Code.
Nobody's, that's not an issue here.
Okay, good, good, well, I'm glad to hear that.
I thought you would be, that's why I mentioned it to you.
So tonight, you're saying we can go ahead and adopt this road officially, again, part of the 2008 plat that was, that was certified at the courthouse, correct?
You can accept it as dedicated on the 2008 plat.
Okay, so that's what we need to do first, and that makes it a town, do what?
Why would we do that? And I'm asking you, Dean, why does that?
That's what I wanna know, why, it's already been done. And it says in there, that's one thing, that if it's dedicated on a plat, then it's a city street. And for the record, I want the record, just because it's his opinion, doesn't mean it's the law. There's an old saying about opinions, every lawyer has one.
But Dean, we have no deed to that street.
You don't have a deed to any street.
That's not true. We do have deeds to some streets, and if we accept...
Well, when there were counties, when there were county roads.
But here's the thing, we did later start accepting streets and have them inspected, so we're just making this clean, 'cause it doesn't even have a name.
They've troubled up the hot wash.
Well, it may be, but...
Here is where Harden paid the town of Mont Eagle, right there, on, that's the check number, that's the date, and that says "City of Mont Eagle," what's that say, "Road of Sonic, $25,865." So what did Harden get for that $25,800 and some dollars?
I don't know, I went in Mont Eagle in 2008.
Right, it's a good idea.
What we're trying to say is, if you want it neat and clean, and not have a problem tonight, or have a problem with it in the future, then the Town Council's gotta act on it.
I don't know, well, they don't have to, they can, but here's the thing, the way you're setting it up, and the planning commission's setting it up, is to make it look like it was never a city street. It's my contention, it's always been a city street. If it's not a city street yesterday, it's not one today.
Well, here's...
And it was one. And people come and go, that's the only way they can get to Sonic.
But we're not saying it's not, we're saying we're cleaning this up. Dean, this was an error that should've happened back then.
Are you gonna go back and clean everything?
Yeah, well, you know, if it's brought to our attention, we have to. It's our responsibility to fix these things. And I'm not saying we won't to.
Well, I would hope, I would hope your minutes would reflect that this is not something you're doing for this developer.
No, because we're recording this, so there's a record that we fixed this, and if we find another one, we'll go back to that, and our minutes are recorded.
Well, you better to fix them all, because in your ordinance that you've got on city streets, and I can dig through it, but I know you don't want to take that long, it says that these dedications will be recorded at the county courthouse.
And they have been. That's what I'm saying, there will be a deed of transfer.
But the ones you've got on your list, that the ordinance that was passed in 2010, they have been recorded at the courthouse.
Well, both are now working on that today, we're working on the streets.
Yeah, this is 2022.
Well, and I, you know, I can't help that, we can only fix what we can fix, just like you said.
But every one of, every one that's in that ordinance that you signed in 2010...
Yeah, in 2010, yeah.
There was a list of approved city streets, and there's even a list that's private streets that's named, but if you dig in this, and I'll find it and give it, get it back to you, it says it shall be, not might be, or ought to be, it says it shall be recorded at the courthouse.
Well, I'm gonna ask you a question, 'cause you're telling me back in 2010, when you were mayor?
I was mayor in 2010.
No, but you were in 88, right? 84, 88?
Eighty to eighty-eight.
Well, I'm saying, were those streets recorded at the courthouse?
In the early, in the mid-eighties, the state legislature passed legislation that all counties and cities would adopt a master road map.
Correct.
Because they had some cities and counties, road commissioners that was doing work on private roads, and they actually prosecuted people and sent them to jail for that, and in reaction to that, the legislature passed, and the town of Mont Eagle, and to my knowledge, every municipality in Grundy County, and Grundy County Highway Department, adopted a master road plan of the roads at that time. And I know Grundy County still has theirs hanging on the wall at the highway department. And of course, it changes over the years, but, and Mont Eagle had one hanging on the wall at one time. I'm not saying you come in and tore it down.
Well, no, and I didn't, and we adopted, well, we adopted from the road lists that exist then, did we not, Keith? I mean, when we did that in 2010, 'cause we were here, John.
How was that list arrived at?
From past minutes and from the amounts we had in there, 'cause I mean, it was 12 years ago, so I've slipped since then, but you know, we'll find, we'll go back and find out the minutes, no, I mean, you know...
No, I'm not, I'm just trying to get the process, but one of the things that they say is, oh, the city hadn't maintained that street down there. Well, they haven't, 'cause it hasn't been needed to do anything, and secondly, there's probably a third of the streets in Mont Eagle that has not been maintained since 2010. That's not the only street in the town of Mont Eagle that has not been maintained, and it doesn't need it, it's one of the newer ones. So Mr. Haynes, again, is blowing smoke.
Well, I'm just saying, to clean this up, we're recording it tonight. We're going back to the 2008 plat, correct? That we'll be using, that we adopt this street as, you know, Sonic Street, or whatever street we wanna call it, Mont Eagle Square Street, that's exactly what the development was gonna be back in the day. I don't care what we call it, but we need to adopt and name this street tonight, to clean this up based on the 2008 plat.
I think you oughta name it after Garrett Haynes.
No, we're naming it after, we're not naming it after anybody, but anyone. No, we're just gonna name it.
Well, on a serious note, I would, would hope that the council would word, whatever you do, turn it down, accept it, or whatever, that, again, my contention, and I think the facts show, the city paid the $25,000 and some dollars to go back, you should have a bill from Tinsley paving on it, it was approved by the Planning Commission, the minutes reflect it, it's in some of the city minutes that it makes reference to it, it doesn't say, it does not say it accepts it as a city street, but in the couple of those, there's mention of it in the August meeting, and this thing, that was filed in July, and they said they were gonna open October 1st, in the minutes, I don't know what day they actually opened, but in the minutes, it said they were planning on opening on October the 1st. And again, all we have is, you know, is the minutes, but, you know, I don't know, you know, the whole thing is a screw-up, just as much as any other city street, or the way, when a developer comes in, I came in in December, the Planning Commission, and talked about this project, and these people wanting to come, build, and they're gonna invest $8 million, and was talking about the fact that normally it got bogged down, and I was standing at the podium, and I think Garrett and Anya was sitting there, and somebody made reference to the fact, well, we probably can't get anything done before the end of the year, because nobody works after December 15th, they all take vacations.
But we were doing that.
I know, and I'm just telling you when it started, for the groundwork, and it's long past December the 31st.
And they didn't get back with us because somebody was sick, and I met with you every time you asked me?
Yes, you have.
And we had a special meeting tonight, so we're not holding up a cell.
You have been most helpful, you have been most helpful.
So I'm just saying, so we're trying to work with you.
And I'm not saying any of this is on your plate. I am saying there's problems, and the street thing, you know, if y'all prefer to litigate it, I'm fine with that. The only problem with that is the date's gonna run out on the prospective buyer, well, he called last week, wanted to know when they could close, and I said, "There's issues," and, you know, somebody's gonna have to take responsibility. Is that, whose responsibility was it? Was it Joe Lester's to come up here and say, to the City Council, you need to cut this road?
What, can we lay, for a moment, aside the question of, is it currently a city street? Just lay it aside. What do you need to get this property to closing and make the development happen?
Well, before I can proceed with the Planning Commission to show the ingress and egress to the two-acre parcel they're wanting to do, which Mike Barry has drawn it up, but it's gonna have to be redrawn, because what Michael Barry wants to do, if the Planning Commission approves it, if the planners say, instead of the cul-de-sac, I can show you better than I can play it, to, on that bit, man.
The big one? No, I want to, yeah, I can, you know, this, I want to see this.
Michael Barry says, "Subject to approval from the Planning Commission, is this cul-de-sac would just be turned around." Because what they're proposing to buy starts here and goes down, let me show you that, it's legal. And he says, "In Franklin County, they do it, but I told him, I said, "You probably won't, you probably can't do that in Mont Eagle." He said, "Oh, we do it everywhere else." But as you can see, what he was planning on doing was going, extending the street down like you mentioned, and again, you have a temporary cul-de-sac. It would be at no cost to the town of Mont Eagle, but the least expensive way is this cul-de-sac would be turned up here. And the purpose of that cul-de-sac, and the reason it has to have that 50-foot radius there, is for cars to turn around, but also emergency vehicles, ambulances, fire engines, you should not have a dead-end street. The Planning Commission used to, would not approve any plat subdivision, and this, by the way, this was a minor subdivision, which should've only required staff approval, just like this one here. But anyway, you cannot have a dead-end street. You must have, be able to turn, turn around. And so now, Michael Barry's, the people buying the property, they don't want to incur the cost of running 607, no, .607 acres of new street, extending it, and if they put the cul-de-sac in, because here it starts dropping off, if you pay attention to it, when you go down there, it drops off, and the road can't come this far anyway, the road's gonna have to, at some point in time, be turned and come in a more northwestern direction, 'cause you've got a steep drop off there where they haul that rock and stuff in there. So the future, like, these people that want to buy this lot, they're wanting to buy a lot right here, and they've got an option on it. And it would not be, it would not affect them, in fact, we could've done a minor subdivision on it, because they would've actually have access from Eagle Cliff Road. But there, again, you're throwing a lot more traffic in the beginning, and this was designed this way to try to control the traffic from the residents that live on Rensnest, and it was decided that that would be the best thing, rather than coming into Sonic off of this called Eagle Cliff Road now that's used in Rensnest. And then this 15-foot section here was donated to, uh, you.
Twenty-five foot. Shut up, you're saying this is Rensnest, this is the current road that they...
Well, technically, it used to be Rensnest, but I guess in your ordinance, when you put them roads in there, you wrote that down as usual.
Well, and looked at it for 10 years, but I'll go back and look at it for sure. 12, yeah, 12 years.
But anyway, my point being, you can see the rhyme and reason to this, and if you look in the minutes, they refer this 15-foot strip, and that makes the center, a center turn line, a coming in and in going out line. And again, it goes back, Joe Lester them, not this section, Joe Lester paid to the town of Mont Eagle for this street to be bought. And if it's not a city street, why is the town of Mont Eagle taking $25,000 and some dollars to do it?
But again, let's lay that question aside. What do you need to get this property to closing? Because that, I think, is the real issue, you're right. Whether or not somebody in 2008 did something or didn't do something, how do we fix it now?
Before you, you just can see, this has to be a city street.
Well, that's what we're saying tonight, that we need to...
The first one, not this, it was a...
So that's... We need to adopt this as a city street, and it was supposed to be in the Mont Eagle Square when I knew about it, right? They were gonna develop Sonic, and then there was gonna be a hotel, there's gonna be...
There was a holiday express down here, and that's why they were gonna extend.
And so, that's the reason it was developed years ago, and so, we wanna call it Mont Eagle Square Street, but we need to, we need to name this street and accept it tonight, is what we're here for.
Mike recorded it before that.
My player is, is you let me speak up?
Okay, here you go.
What, if somebody's inclined to make it, you need a motion to accept the dedication of the street as depicted in the 2008 plat.
But, but if I read Garrett's comments correctly, that is not gonna help you tonight, because...
Oh, no, 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 it's not gonna help me tonight.
It's not gonna help you, because...
But it still needs to be done.
That's all you can do tonight, though, ain't it?
This is all you...
Right, so if it's not going to help you tonight, well, let me ask you another question. Do we know, and that's probably a question for Keith, whether that road meets the specifications as it's built today, that we would accept it?
Yes.
It does meet those specifications?
It's been there that long, and nothing's been, had to be done to it.
Okay.
So, I mean, yeah, it's a good road.
So I don't, I guess I don't have an issue per se if Keith says it meets our specifications, but if it's not gonna help you, 'cause my understanding from Garrett is that we, you're gonna have to go before the Planning Commission anyway. The original conversation was about to allow you to have a minor division, but my understanding is that you're not gonna get a minor division anyway, because you've gotta accept even more city street in order to do this. And so if, if...
Now, he's saying, he is, Garrett is saying, it must come before the full Planning Commission, and that's fine, if he gets, like, Rensnest and go by them, but a minor subdivision states that if you're not dividing the property into more than two lots, and then you get the signatures, and it has, everybody's signed on it, then staff can't approve, just like, just like it was done in 2008.
But he is our staff, and he says he can't approve it.
But for the, for the extension of the road to be a good city street, the Planning Commission has to approve it. It can't be approved by the staff, it has to be approved by the Planning Commission, that's in the Tennessee Code, and then it's gotta come back, the extension's gotta come back to the Town Council for them to accept that dedication.
Exactly. We're not standing, we are not extending this road. We're not extending, we are not extending this road. But when we come back before the planning commission, this cul-de-sac will just, will, will still be here. Uh, and this city street will still be here. And the access to this property on that other plat will be here from this cul-de-sac. Now, this cul-de-sac will have to be paved.
Yeah, that's what we're saying, the cul-de-sac, that's what I'm talking about, the cul-de-sac.
But that, that road is not gonna be extended at this particular time.
It shouldn't be extended.
It doesn't have to have, uh, the full planning commission review. But at this point in time, it may not make any difference anyway.
And that's, I guess that's what I'm saying, if it doesn't make any difference anyway, if you're gonna go before the planning commission, and that's not gonna kill the deal, which we hope it's not.
Well, that's gonna probably kill the deal, but maybe later on, it, it'll have to be done at some point in time. Uh, regardless, when it's sold to somebody else, if, if this deal falls through.
What can we do to help you get the deal through?
Approve, we have to dedicate the road tonight. And we can name the road tonight. And it goes to the, it goes to the, and that was what we were told in the beginning.
And, and, yeah, the planning commission.
I'd accept the dedication.
If we don't do it, it's a dedication.
As it exists on the two thousand and eight plat.
We have to, that's the first step.
To get this to that.
To dedicate that road.
To accept the dedication of the road as it appears on the two thousand and eight plat.
And let me ask you again, Mr. Lane. It goes all the way to the end of the cul-de-sac, right?
What?
The road.
Yes.
And that, but let me ask you this, who's gonna pay to pave the cul-de-sac?
The developer.
Okay, so you're telling me we're going to take Montego Square Road, for lack of a better term, cause that's what it was back in the day, and it's going to go all the way out here, which I think.
It's gonna be proposed to be shifted around, but yeah, at the same.
Well, I'm saying, it still has an entrance.
They actually call it a, 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 instead of a cul-de-sac, they call it a piece act.
Well, so, so Sam.
Right, but we'll have to accept that separately, right?
Now, it will still be in this same defined area. It's not being extended.
They're gonna use the cul-de-sac to go in and out, for their property.
To here, and that, and that's.
So that's correct, isn't it, Sam? If they're using entrance to from the cul-de-sac?
If it's not complete, then we wouldn't want it.
I'm not really, I'm not where I can see.
And if, if you have to go before the planning commission anyway, why wouldn't you just go through the planning commission? We approve a new plat that includes that subdivision, and we accept the whole road once it's completed. Why would we, why, why are we doing that?
I would not accept it, because it's done in two thousand and eight.
Okay, so. Because you're asking us to accept the cul-de-sac, and it's not been built.
No, it's already built, and it's not paid.
But it's not. But it's not been built.
Yes, it has.
It has, it's there, it's just not paid. And he's saying, no, he's saying not my fault.
That's why the word temporary is there.
Yeah, but they're gonna pay for the paving. And we're gonna get that in tonight's meeting. We don't, we don't have any cost. He said, told us numerous times, that's what I wanted to clarify. If we dedicate this road, which Sam's looking at it right now, to give us his opinion on this, the two thousand and eight, that we can go forward, but let him look at his. And if he says yes, if we dedicate this road, then we're not blocking the sale.
We're not blocking, we're not blocking the sale anyway.
My question here, looking, looking at the two thousand and eight plat, and I have it up. There is a dotted line across from the back of the plat.
Right.
A dotted line, and then it says, new street, right of way, point nine acres.
Yep.
And then temporary cul-de-sac, and it's got a fifty-foot radius around it. And so, my question is, I'm not sure that the, that the, the, the road that was approved by the planning commission in two thousand and eight was anything more than the road, and the cul-de-sac was not yet approved.
That's not true.
Dean's position is.
That's the end, that's the end of the asphalt right there, where, where that dotted line is. And then that's just pure conjecture. You can come up with a thousand different possibilities for that. Uh.
Well, I'll let, I'll let the town council, uh, make their call on that.
That's what you need to do.
It appears to make it be like, I'm, I'm not. And I'm not out to get you, buddy.
No, no, I know what you're out for.
Just a minute, okay? Uh, let me ask my question. We're gonna, we're gonna do something here, and we'll be done. Okay, Sam, based upon this motion being made, as you said, and the developer would have to pay for the expense of paving the cul-de-sac, which was, is, is, if it's part of that road. And we move forward with a minor subdivision if that's.
Yeah.
So we can, okay.
No, no, that's for the planning commission to decide. That's not your call.
Garrett's already made that call.
Okay. But if we do air part, we're not holding up a sale from the council's part.
No, no, no.
Okay.
I, I would say that you could have, and what a proper motion would be to accept the street as depicted on the two thousand and eight, uh, uh, plat, uh, with the proviso that cul-de-sac be paved at the city standards.
By the developer.
By the developer, the veteran.
Okay. Dean, do you agree with it, with that?
Yes, and, and I also, according to what's in, in this, if the planning commission turned it down, I can still come before the planning commission, or the city council, and the city council can override it, according to what's in here. So, so, and there's, well, there's a good reason for that, because it doesn't give Garrett Haynes or the planning commission or anybody else the final say on what goes on in this town. It's, it's you guys right there.
And I agree. So can we, can we either dedicate the road tonight? And, I mean, it was your road in the beginning, Joe Lester's, do you have a problem with Montego Square Road or Montego? I mean, y'all, that's what it's gonna be before. I don't know. Yeah. And then based upon, at the end of that, the developer pays for the completion of the cul-de-sac. No, I can't make the motion. Y'all gotta, y'all, somebody's gonna make the motion, if that's what y'all want to do.
So Sam, if we accept it tonight, would there not be then a follow-up deed transfer for the property to be recorded in the courthouse to make this a legal thing? Is this not a two-step process?
Okay.
You could, you could do it that way, but since it's shown on the plat, it's being dedicated, I think you're okay, without having a deed date.
Well, I guess my, my concern is that we, we accept it subject to, uh, the upgrading of the cul-de-sac. I would, I would make the motion to accept it subject to having the street and the cul-de-sac, uh, be up to the city standards. Um, where, where's, where's our, um, our fail-safe position? What if nothing happens? How, how, if, if this is not a two-step process?
City street, and they can't develop off of it.
Nothing happens, it's not a city street, and it doesn't develop off of it, it's, it goes nothing much.
So this, the second step is us, uh, having a written acceptance of the street, saying it meets our standards? If we're gonna accept it tonight, subject to it meeting our standards, there's gotta be a second step, right?
Your road's over attended, and wherever it does that, inspections will look at it and see whether it's up to your standards.
Okay, so we can accept it tonight with the proviso that Keith will have to sign off on the final paving in order to make this legitimate. That's all I'm looking for, is to, is, is just to try to make sure, and that's, I'm happy to do that.
You're only talking about the completion of the cul-de-sac, cause the rest of it's already there. We're only talking that section, that needs to be identified, cause.
And it says that in your regulations, that the city has the authority to make you post a bond. Then you should have to post a bond or, or give you the money in order to say that it's satisfied.
So if the motion tonight includes you posting a bond to ensure that this road.
No, we won't post bond. We'll, we'll do, uh, like before, whatever the cost estimate is, is just put that money up. There's no need in buying a bond, uh, whatever the money is. And, and, but we will not agree to what you said about bringing it up to standards. It was brought up to standards when it was put in in two thousand and eight, and it was signed by a city official. So just vote it down if you're gonna go that route.
It was signed by a city official on the plat before it was ever built. That, that had nothing to do with acceptance.
But the money was put up.
Keith, can you come here a minute?
The fines were paid. What, what about the twenty-five thousand dollars?
I don't know anything about the twenty-five thousand dollars.
There's a lot of stuff that you don't know about, just look at the facts.
Wait a minute, I want to, I want Keith here, and there's your road inspector. Someone ask him a question before we make this motion. The section, and I'm just gonna show you the, the diagram.
You want the big one?
Well, I think he can see, from here to here, is that up to city standards? If you were inspecting that road, would you accept it today?
Yes.
So even today, you would accept it? Okay. Based upon this, you will inspect that before it's, before that, if that's the motion tonight. So based upon, others? He says, section one of Montego Square, for lack of a better term, y'all can knock that out if you want to, but is, is up to city standards. All right, you heard that, Sam? So hey, we got our road inspector.
I thought it.
Okay, then section two, which is still part of that road that's not completed, will be completed by the developer, and you will inspect it, and it will be up to Montego's standards.
Exactly.
Based upon this motion tonight. Okay, if y'all do that, I'm gonna do this weddings for somebody to make a motion tonight.
I already didn't make a motion.
All right. What's the motion that he needs to make, Sam?
Uh, yeah, I'm here to cover all that, I like the most.
The motion will be to accept, to accept the road behind the Sonic, uh, as depicted on the two thousand and eight plat, subject to the, the cul-de-sac area being brought up to city standards, by the developer.
Yeah, that's it, I will never repeat that.
Danny, did you get that?
Okay, to accept the road by Sonic, two thousand and eight, um, plat.
Subjected down to two thousand and eight plat.
The cul-de-sac will be developed by, will be known by the developer.
Being brought up to city standards.
By the developer.
By the developer.
Okay.
Okay. Now, we're gonna name the road while we're doing this. Let's just, since we're gonna do our amount provision, do you?
Why don't you have that motion and pass it, and you have one?
Okay, about the name. So do we have a second on this motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, Jessica's seconding it. We're gonna roll call vote. Nate?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Doreen?
Yes.
And, yes.